Call this meeting in order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Home affairs say aye.
Aye.
Pours, motion carried. Open forum, if anybody would like to go up to the podium and speak. All right, consent agenda, approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments, ambulance department bad debt, fire department bad debt, there's a gambling resolution for the Chamber of Commerce. There is also a couple resolutions, 2022-409 from the American Legion Post 101 to the Chamber of Commerce, there's a resolution number 2022-50 from the American Legion Post 101 to the Chamber of Commerce, and then there's a resolution 2022-53 from Magnify Financial to the City of Melrose. Can I get a, and there is a Stearns County invoice for the RDB project. Anything else, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Home affairs say aye.
Aye.
Pours, motion carried. And then we have a presentation to a donation from Magnify Financial. If you want to talk about it.
So, Magnify, Isaac had approached me a few months ago saying their foundation is interested in always looking at community projects, and he said, "Do you have any ideas of potentially what could happen here in the City of Melrose?" And I talked to him and said, "You know, one of the things that we're looking at right now is our Sauk River campground. Due to the fact that the river has been rerouted and we're redoing a big project, we will be losing 12 of our sites, we have plans to put new campgrounds in." So, I'm gonna let Isaac tell you the rest, but we're very fortunate that they were kind enough to give us a donation. So Isaac, I don't know if you want to say anything else, or Gary, if you guys want to say anything, do you want to go to the podium, please?
Well, just on behalf of the foundation, I think it was said well, we really, our foundation is really all about our communities and supporting the communities and doing things that provide lasting value within the community. So, we really are, you know, honored to be able to do something for this community that's gonna be great, and I think the new park is a great way for us to donate some, something back to the community. So, I don't really have anything else planned to say, but unless Isaac you do, but...
No, and we do really appreciate, you know, appreciate it, because now with all the new standards, ADA, and, you know, there's so many things that makes every little project cost so much more, and stuff is almost starting to get out of, you know, hand. So, to have help from donations from, you know, from Magnify, it means a lot to us, our small towns, and, you know, any other nonprofits in the area, I sure hope they would consider us too for this, but it's nice that you stepped up to the plate first to help our community. Or just wondering, can we take some pictures with you? So, would really appreciate it. So I just, like Craig from the Park Board, and Justin is in the Park Board, is the council representative, and so, well, I'll come up and take some pictures. We'll just stand off to the sidewalk.
Yep, that's fine. Oh, sure. That one, absolutely. Oh, sorry.
I always do it the wrong way. Did you get each shot every time?
Okay, stay, I'm sorry if you could just hang out for one more minute, I need to get my focus on page, please. I need to have a clean camera.
Thank you.
Fire Department monthly, uh, Fire Department report. Chief, buddy?
Hey, good evening. Wanted to come in and get you guys up to date on where things are at with the Fire Department. Usually every year about this time of year, we come in and talk about our annual para, so that'll be included in the report. First of all, start off talking about the call volume for 2022. Currently as of year-to-date, through halfway through August, we're at 99 calls for the year. Just to refresh, from last year, we had 126, and then the year prior to that, 131. So, if I do the math, my guess is we're gonna be close to 140 to 150 calls for the, for service, which would be an all-time high for the department. So it's running up on call volumes. It's a mixture of everything. If you say one thing were to stick out in my mind, we've had, we had fires, we've had medicals and crashes, so there's nothing that really stands out with that. Next item would be the tanker update. Last year, June, I believe it was one in the June, July, we got approval from the council to purchase a new tanker to replace our, our 3,000 gallon tanker. We received a bill and invoice the other day, the chassis is in, so they will start production, start next month, and a little, little luck, we'll have that the first part of November is what they are saying their production is. So, I'm gonna say by end of the year, we all know what happens when things are in production wise, so, um, so yeah, so things are moving along on that, in front of it. Talking again about the para, like I said, every year, this time of year, we come in to look for an increase or discuss our para. Unfortunately, as we all know, the economy hasn't been, been the best going over the last couple of months. So, just to tell you, last June, the rate of return for the para was at 20.8%. June of this year was at a negative 12.7%. So, that being said, no, we are not asking for any increase, because that would put us below that threshold of 107%. So, just want to let you guys know that we did take a look at it, and, and we want to be careful with the dollars, and we don't want to put the city in jeopardy, so that we are gonna stay tight for this year. And I guess the only other thing I'd give you another update on is new gear. Last year, or the beginning of this year, we got in new gear for the Fire Department. The other stuff that we had was 11 years old, so per NFPA standards, it needs to be 10 years. So, we did get the new gear in, that came in rather quickly. We have another four new guys that you guys approved earlier this year. We had those guys fitted, and we will be getting their four years ordered here shortly. I did apply for a DNR grant, and they were gonna be paying for $5,000 of that portion of it, so it's roughly, it's gonna be about $14,000, but through the grant, we were able to get five grand from that, and so they'll pay a portion of that, the new gear for the new guy. So, that in a nutshell is what's going on with the Fire Department. Any questions?
Nope. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Police Department month report. Chief Mouse?
Good evening. Our July 22 report in our traffic area, 11 citations, 71 verbal warnings, three written warnings, 300 calls, requests for service, 337 was last year's number. We ended last year on 2264 in July, and this year, we're on 2022, so we're down about 242 calls overall for the year. 41 agency assists, a little bit higher than normal. A lot of departments have been running a little bit shorter with a lot of summer vacation, so they're always, when they're short-staffed, everybody pitches in, same thing that we've been doing the last four or five weeks as well, when we're short-staffed, asking for a little more help. So, hopefully that number comes back down closer to the normal number we're looking for. A couple things to note, school starts next week, or not next week, but the 30th, so there's gonna be buses moving back around, and kids on bikes, and walking to school and whatever else, so... Start keeping that in mind. Some of the abatement has taken effect, so two of the five have already taken care of their issues. We have a few more days left on the other ones after they've been served, so hopefully by next meeting, we're reporting that there's none to continue to look at, but otherwise, Scott and I'll work towards court if need be. Related to equipment and vehicles, our squad car we ordered in December of '21 has not started being built yet, so John Wees continues to update us every few weeks or so, if it's even considered to be in production or not. Once it's built, or starts being built, it's about 120 days before it would show up at our door. So, my guess is ours will be a January delivery, or maybe even February next year. So we may be actually talking to you closer to our 2024 replacement, ordering it already in 2023, to try and offset that, but we'll talk with John Wees and see what they're seeing for production, those sorts of things, so we're not ordering it too far in advance, but yet getting it in a timely fashion as well. The only other area, golf carts, ATVs, just a reminder, some people have bought them over the summer, just to remember that the golf carts need to have a permit on them, and it's a three-year permit now for $50. Inspections, all those sorts of things, stuff's online, otherwise contact the police department. And ATVs, the standard four-wheeler, you throw your leg over, they need a permit as well, there's no fee for that one, but it's required by state law to have a permit to operate it within the city. So, just a reminder for people, anybody bought something new or different, and keep that in mind. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. City Attorney report.
We are still on schedule for a trial for a week from tomorrow, the 26th. If I, if I hear different, there'll be some more noise, but I'm very hopeful that we'll get this resolved next week. The other item I thought I would make a comment on, just doing it now rather than, later on in the, in the program, in the agenda, you've got the ordinance to do a moratorium on the CBD products, and that is, been happening really all over the state and in local areas, and my only, what I mentioned to the staff, and I'll mention to you, is that, you know, the moratorium statute that gives you the authority to do this, you know, it's a temporary, you only get a year, and the purpose is that then is to allow you to study the problem and, and come up with an answer. Just to remind, and again, you know, your staff is aware of this, there's lots of people looking at what regulation should look, look like, but I think we have to be prepared to follow up on coming up with our own set of regulations, and to put that in the city code. I, I wouldn't rely on the legislature to come up with an answer between now and, you know, and a year from now. There are some narrow exceptions that would allow you to extend the moratorium, but they're narrow, and I wouldn't count on being able to extend it. So we'll have to be, you know, putting some thought and time into what these should look like, you know, we'll look for, you know, input from other communities and see what makes sense, but by adopting this, it's, it's, it's just the first step. You're just buying some time to come up with the regulations that the legislature should have, and, end of the sermon. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Scott. General Fund Financial Quarter Report.
Good evening. Hard to believe we've gone through the first half of 2022 already. For the General Fund, we have a total revenue of $595,244. That makes up only about 25% of our budget. The biggest portions of that are the property taxes and local government aid. We had not received any LGA yet at, as of June 30th, and we have some more of that first half payment of the property taxes that came in July. License and permits were slightly over budget at that point in the year. The liquor licenses were renewed at the beginning of the year, so all of those had been received. And as you see in the chart in your packets, the building permits have increased a lot. Those were at, as of June 30th, the first half of the year is about 70% of the total permits that we issued in '21, so they've been coming in a lot. For charges for services, those are running low compared to budget, and most of that is the administrative fees that we charge to the fire and ambulance departments and TIP accounts, those are done at year-end. However, there were some revenues that we received for the street department doing sweeping of various businesses in town. And as the fire chief mentioned, our interest income is an interest loss this year. It's a significant adjustment on our books due to the change in market value, it's not necessarily a cash transaction, it's just adjusting as if we were to sell the investments early, what we would gain or lose. So we're continuing to work with our investment brokers with that, trying to find investments with a higher yield and that fit into our ladder, to build some of that back. For the expenditures in the General Fund, most of those are kind of right on track with where we'd expect. One that was up to budget was the assessing, because we paid for the entire year for Stearns County. Police expenditures were comparable to budget, but when you look at it compared to last year, were slightly higher, and a big driver of that is our workers' comp that we've paid in full, but we've had a significant increase to the premiums, and a lot of that was relating to the police department. Also, they paid the Stearns County mobile access fees earlier this year compared to last year. Due to the snowy winter, the snow and ice department, the costs were really high compared to budget with all the plowing at the beginning of the year. Usually we kind of take a look at public works as a whole with the streets and parks department, and in that case, then they're all pretty comparable. The position had been vacant for quite a while, but we now have Miss Hellerman for the city planner position that was filled in July, so that department overall is expected to be low, because it was budgeted for the full year, and so we'd have half a year with that. And as you may recall, we had contracted with Tracy Ryan for Economic Development during that time. Those costs are paid out of MATA though, so it's not netted against the savings that we had in the General Fund. And I touched on the large increase in building permits that were issued, the fees relating to that are paid in July, so those were not reflected here. We took a look at the General Fund expenses by department, as well as categorized by category. As I mentioned, the parks and rec were slightly low, and planning and development were low. Maintenance costs overall have been running low the first half of the year, and that was mostly to city hall maintenance, we hadn't had any costs that we paid out at that point. When we look at MATA, there was a lot of activity for the first half of the year. In the past, we had paid out salaries in December, and due to some changes, we now have to start paying those out monthly, so the first half of the year was paid as of this point. Those are, when we worked on the budget, we did an average of the prior years, however, because of all of the development and discussions this year, we've had more meetings, so those costs also went up with that. As I mentioned, we had budgeted with Ryan Development, about 44% of those costs through, her services through May had been paid. We also had $5,000 budgeted for other professional services, however, we've exceeded that quite a bit due to engineering and property appraisals, as well as legal fees that were done. We have been looking at this and are likely to reallocate some of those costs out of MATA and code them to specific development accounts, and that way, if we're able to recoup some of those from developers, from TIP agreements, however, that way we'll have those broken out and can do that. So, we're hoping that we'll get reimbursed for some of that. Another item that you may have seen is debt service of just under $10,000. In 2016, we had offered a variety of loans to various businesses, and those were deferable at years four through seven, so those started getting written off by a third if the businesses were still here. So, that along with another loan that had been issued as a TIP payout resulted in $9,818 written off the first part of this year, and we're expecting another $9,500 that'll be amortized off. I did mention that because of the significant expenses incurred with MATA, we may have to look at another budget transfer from the General Fund, however, continuing to look at that, because a lot of it, like I said, has been non-cash activity, like the amortizing of the loans, as well as the interest adjustments. So we'll continue to watch for that, as well as reclassifying some of those costs to the projects, and hopefully that won't be needed, or if it will, it won't be as significant as originally was thought. For special revenue funds, these would be the Senior Activity Center, or TRICAP funds, the Community Development Block Grant Fund. The good news is the Senior Activity Center has been showing more activity after a slow couple of years with COVID, they've been doing some bus trips and different things, so we've been seeing that. For the CDVG grant, as of June 30th, there had not been any expenses, but we had had a draw just this past month for that. And the TRICAP fund just had its annual services, so nothing significant there. Capital Project Funds, there's been a lot of activity going on here. As I mentioned, our tax increment revenue, those districts are included in the Capital Project Funds, a portion of that was received, and the rest will be received in July and December. 90% to 95% of that money, though, is paid back out to the districts. We have a large amount set up as a transfer out from our Capital Improvement Fund for the city to the RDB Fund. That'll be done at the end of the year, when we have a better idea of how much is needed. So we had a budget amount of about $1,635,000, so it'll be about that amount, or if more or less is needed. It'll likely close the project out unless it's still, if it's not finished, so. When we look at the projects that we had budgeted for and planned for, street improvements is quite a bit under budget, most of that comes in in the third and fourth quarter when they invoice, just to, when they're able to do the work. As the police chief mentioned, the vehicle expense that we had budgeted is still zero, because they haven't been able to get that to us. On the opposite side, or similar, I guess, streets vehicles is well over budget, because we had ordered that and planned for it in '21, and it just arrived in '22 and paid for, so a lot of it just is timing. For the Fire Department, the fire chief touched on this a bit, wages are paid out in December, so those costs are low, however, we had a workers' compensation insurance payment that was made, and as I mentioned with the police department, it went up quite a bit, and a lot of it was in those areas. Vehicle expenses are running high, there's been inspections and repairs on the ladder truck and light replacements needed, there's also been radio and equipment maintenance for testing of the air packs, and some turnout gear has been purchased as well. Also, like the fire chief mentioned, fire calls are high, the build calls that we've had are about 86% of the total from last year, so they've been busy there. With the ambulance department, looking at their overall runs, those are running right on track with where we'd expect and comparable to last year. They also had a large interest loss, however, we had a $10,000 donation from the Lions also coded in that same area, which offset it, and that donation was used towards their radios and jacket purchases. There were reimbursements received from the county for EMT training courses, there's also large vehicle expenses, there were repairs needed on rigs 541 and 542, and the increase in gas prices has not helped with all of the activity in the ambulance fund. Overall, the calls are about 52% of the prior year. And then the last category of funds is our debt service fund, all payments have been made at this point for the debt for this year, so everything is right on track, other than the property taxes coming in at the end of the year. Just as a reminder on that, our last payment on that bond will be in 2028, so we're getting closer. Can I answer, any questions anybody has?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. City Planner Report. Sheila?
We have been really busy with building permits, especially a lot of reshingles, the hailstorm this spring did some, did some damage, and so you'll see lots of signs around town, the contractors are busy on the roads. I've been also doing some preliminary plan reviews on other properties, this includes meeting with the Sauk River Watershed District on the Riverview Development next door, the former Kraft property, and reviewing requirements for that. I've also been involved with Colleen on the Sauk River Campsites and the Bridge Project. We've been working with our building inspector to provide some guidance to the residents of Rose Park in terms of what's allowable over there on additions and modifications to their homes, we've been receiving multiple requests, and we really want to have some clear guidance for them on what they're allowed to do. I've also been involved in discussions with potential developers and builders on the housing projects, including Railroad West, 168 Riverfront, and the Daylight Court Plat Two, and the budget discussions on those projects. Looking forward, all of those projects are gonna require some significant planning work as they move forward. In terms of some grants, I've been working with the Montessori School and the local daycares in developing a possible grant application. There is currently a deed grant available, focused on adding or expanding daycares in Minnesota, and so we've been generating some ideas about their needs and what a grant application from us could potentially cover. There's a new MINDOT grant period opening up for transportation needs, including sidewalks and trails. If we move forward on that, we'll need a council resolution concerning that as the grant application deadline draws near, which is gonna be December. Looking forward, I've been able to ride with Roger in Electric and Gary in Streets and discuss some upcoming projects, and work on resolving and buttoning up some prior projects that have been outstanding. Working with some potential commercial property owners on site plans and future plans, including an easement vacation, which I'll be coming to the council with next month to allow for expansion of an existing site. We've begun a list of comprehensive plan changes which are necessary, given our current developments, as well as some zoning changes that may be necessary based on what we're seeing. So as a part of the upcoming budget discussions, the comprehensive plan update and zoning changes are included as a budget in the next, as a line item in the next budget. I also just want to take a minute to thank the city employees, the boards and the councils for being so welcoming and accommodating of all my questions, it's been much appreciated. Also to the people in Melrose who've been coming into the city center, stopping me on the street, I really appreciate their support. And I'll be back later on the agenda for an action item on a conditional use permit.
Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. Blumel?
All right, good evening. Most of my time's been focused on helping staff with budgeting for 2023, 2024 projects that are coming up, but we took a brief look at those this evening, you guys saw some of what we're looking at, and do, work through that until we get up to your budget session at the end of the month here, and then we'll be showing you guys what the fruits of our labor are, otherwise that's primarily been it, aside from helping with some housing with, with MATA and staff as well, but otherwise, nothing too crazy for the month on my end.
Nice to have an easy one, huh?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. City Administrator Report.
So just some utility project updates, here's some pictures just to show you guys... Here's some pictures just to show you guys. So the progress is being made on the wastewater treatment facility. The last payment was requested for the Public Facilities Authority loan, and the remaining money now will be coming out of cash set-asides in the utility fund. Substantial completion is still scheduled for March of '23. This is just some of the progress they've made. That's a headworks building that they're putting in, and that's where the big twisty pumps are going to be located. That's a real technical term, by the way. And this is the main clarifier that they put in, and that's the arm of it. It's quite, quite deep. And here's some other things, just FYI. The next thing is obviously the RDB project. Over the next two weeks, overlay on the bridge, which we saw tonight, is done. I'm not sure, are the sidewalks done on both sides, too?
Sidewalks are done. They got to do this Saturday and then over again.
Okay. Saturday, okay. They are also working on repairs to the dam. I think they pretty much have those done as well. Nope, they're still.
They got a couple of weeks here.
Okay, okay. A big, huge thank you to the Melrose Fire Department. The chief is here, and we appreciate that. They went ahead and washed off the dam, and then what happened is WSB came in with their drone, and they were able to do a really detailed, the drone got to get up close to where that dam wall is. The good news is, is the spillway is in excellent shape. So the only repairs are really going to be on the abutments on the sides, and then the other areas in the walls, the wing walls, that type of thing that we already had identified before. What you see in front of you is work on Main Street is not expected to begin until probably after Labor Day, which means we will be impacting school. Little hard to see on this map, but the road that's going to actually, or the section of the road that's going to be closed is a hatched line on Fifth. So it's really just, if you draw a circle around where Ilios is, Unique Boutique, over to the meat market, and then the auto. It's that intersection and a little ways down that will be closed for a couple of weeks, so we're going to have to reroute the traffic, unfortunately, there. So just another thing about the other departments. Electric Department has been continuing to work on bringing overhead lines underground on the west side of town, and they're working on the electric now for the RDB project. That's happening streets. Obviously, Gary and his crew have been working on mowing, maintenance, and upkeep of all the roads, parks, and working on several RDB-related matters. Hydrant flushing hopefully is going to begin shortly, and then both the street and electric department will be completing installation of water and electric lines in the Sauk River Park, hopefully in September. The next thing that you're going to see on your, as an update, is, and you guys saw this tonight, but the campgrounds have been staked out for the Sauk River Park improvements. And on August 10th, I was at the LCCMR board meeting, and they unanimously approved the work plan for the city. So the park board will be meeting on August 25th, which is next week, to finalize any, the project scope and the rest of the improvements. We are going to be running short on the bathrooms, so that may be a conversation we'll have to bring back when we're talking about our budget. But the other improvements include the campsites, the canoe kayak launch, fishing pier, signage, and then, of course, the bathroom shower facility. So that's what's happening there. Real quick, just on the housing strategy update, we have land acquisitions, which includes what we're referring to as Railroad West, which is a Tyler property. We've referred to it before. That was closed on July 26th. We have a harvest and lease agreement, so that Tyler's can continue to farm it until such time that we need it. The 167 River property, we are in the process, we have a purchase agreement that's signed, and hopefully we're going to close on that soon. And that's kind of where we're at. Craft Lot, Goldman Properties has been working on a site plan at the Craft location along with reviewing a developer's agreement. So hopefully, we're going to have movement on that as well. There is an informational item a little bit later on the agenda that we'll get to, and that's Nature Energy. And then just very quickly, I wanted to show you, this is not in color, but if you look at our billboard that we share with the school district, this will be the school district's side of the billboard. Now, the agreement that we have is we flip, so they're actually going to be on the other side that we're on right now with that River Fest sign. We did have a chamber meeting at noon today, and the chamber and the city, the chamber and the city are working together to try and come up with the other side of this sign. So we'd like to work with the same person that actually did this sign. So that's kind of where we're at. We'll be bringing that back before the council to get their final approval on that. And finally, to split, oh, of note, this past week, actually on Wednesday, it says April 10th in your packet, I meant August 10th. The farmers market celebrated National Farmers Week. They had over 500 people that were at the farmers market. So big, huge thank you to the police department, the fire department, and the ambulance department for all being there. It was a really big hit, and the farmers market continues to be a great thing. So if you're out and about on Wednesdays, it's Wednesdays at the Lake Wobegon Trail by Coburn's from 3 to 7, I think? 3 to 7?
6.
3 to 6? Okay. 3 to 6. And then lastly, in the lobby, if you'll look as you walk out, there's artwork that folks have submitted to the Melrose Area Art Council to be displayed on the new monument sign that is being proposed downtown at the Melrose Feed Mail Property. The Art Council is asking for the public's help in choosing the artwork, so please stop by and vote for your favorite. Again, they're out in the lobby. Couple other things I will talk about later on the agenda, and that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Just add on to the farmers market. If you have not been there, give it a whirl. I mean, they have some good cold food, hot food, different things to try that you might not be used to, but it opened up my eyes to some different foods, and it was great. And then the other note that I have about shutting down Main Street the first week of school, we really worked hard to see if we could get them to get it done, but there's, it's out of our control, and there's nothing we can do about it. So before you call us, yeah, it's not on us. It is definitely the people on the projects, so, just so everybody knows. We are on to action items. Sheila, if you want to talk about that.
Okay, I have an action item for you. It's the approval of a conditional use permit request. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their July 25th meeting, reviewed the proposal. Jared and Austin Etcheverry, who are represented here tonight, are proposing to install a solar system on their roof of their outbuilding as well as their home. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed it. You will see the planning report in your packets. As I mentioned, the owners are here if you have any questions about it. Just an update, the building permit has been applied for, and it has been approved by the building inspector. We are still waiting on the interconnect agreement with public utilities, but the conditional use permit would be subject to that interconnect agreement being completed.
All right. Resolution number 2022-51, resolution case number 6-2022401. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Definitely would like to see when you're done, how it all works, so please invite me over, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we're on to B. Ordinance number 8-18-2022, an ordinance providing a moratorium on the sale of hemp-derived THC food and beverage in the city of Melrose, Minnesota. Is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we're on to Stearns County Attorney Prosecution Fees.
Yes, so we're due for contract renewal or verification for the Stearns County Attorney's Office. We've been with them for 10, 12 years, I believe now, 10 years for sure. Every two years, we renew with them. How their contracts are set up, it's in a tiered system based on the number of prosecutions that are sent their way. We've been in the same tier system, thankfully, for quite some time. We did have a little bubble that bumped up one year, but they kept us in the same tier because the contract said so. They are looking for a 5% increase this year as that number in the tiered system had remained flat for all those years, so they're trying to catch up with some inflation and everything else as well. So the annual contract for Stearns County would be $14,175, and that'd be for each year of service for '23 and '24.
Okay. And you've been happy with the way the company's been doing it?
We have been.
Yeah. Sounds like it's been a good, good relationship.
It has been.
So, well, that's great. Can I get a motion to approve the Stearns County Attorney Prosecution Fee?
So move.
Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, then the right-of-way purchase for acquisition of the mayor property, that's finally out and about for us.
Yes, so back in May of 2013, the council had approved the purchase as part of the right-of-way cost with this project. And on November 16th of '21, we did have a signed agreement with Stearns County for this project, including the replacement of the bridge, approach, improvements, first street improvements, the dam repairs, channel, and some right-of-way. So with that, it stated that we would finance 50% of the right-of-way costs, including the demolition and related engineering. So we had paid for all of the demolition of the building and 50%, or 50% of the demolition, 50% of the engineering. They found that they had never invoiced us for the portion of the building. So they purchased that building in October of 2015 for $129,637. And so we have invoice number 2022-180 attached, and that's our 50% share, so it'd be $64,818.
All right.
I thought that was a done deal.
So we've done a thorough review to make sure that there hadn't been any, they had no record of the invoice, we have no record of the payment. They had never invoiced us, so.
Okay, so I'm guessing this was, I mean, this was prior to me even on, that you guys approved this, six, eight years ago?
Yeah. And I was back then already, yeah.
So I guess we owe him $64,800.
I mean, there isn't much you can really do, I guess, so. Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. Then the action item is part-time street worker for worker, action to consider to hire Bob Beckerman back to fill the temporary gap in coverage at Step 2. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. Resolution 2022-51, resolution requesting a special session.
The legislature did not pass a tax bill and bonding bill before this session adjourned. At the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference, Senator Tom Bach, who is now an independent, the outgoing state senate capitol chair urged members to reach out and demand a special session to pass a bonding bill and a tax bill with a local government aid increase, because that was one of the big things both the LGA and, or I'm sorry, the League of Minnesota Cities and Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities were pushing for. So CMGC sent the attached resolution that they're requesting all member cities approve and send to the governor walls and the leaders of each caucus. So that is action item, or resolution number 2022-52. Resolution requesting a special session.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The first part of the informational items is Utility Commission Meeting Minutes, TRICAP Open House, Hormel's Reorganization Operations, that's especially with Jennie O'Foods, and then Nature's Energy. So I'll let you have any questions or anything to say on that?
Nope.
Do you want me to talk?
Or did we? No. All right. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Do we have any questions or concerns?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Meeting over.